Good evening. Welcome to the Monday, June twenty first, two thousand and twenty one meeting of the Long Meadows School Committee. The meeting is posted as a remote meeting, however, your room location has also been posted. A reminder that all votes while participating remotely must be made by roll call or vote. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Our next item is correspondence. Kevin?
Thank you, Ryan. Phone correspondence will be recorded. An email from Ms. Deb Novani dated June sixth sharing a social media post concerning the heat and mask wearing. An email from Mr. Patrick Shinoda dated June fifteenth thanking the committee for their work this past year during the pandemic in unprecedented time. And then visit for correspondence.
Thank you. And we have a possible motion on minutes. Anyone that's interested?
Happy to take that. I move that the school committee approved the minutes for the June eighth, two thousand and twenty one school committee meeting and has presented.
There's, I can, is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Bronwyn?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Angie, I know you're here in the room with us, although I don't see your screen yet. You want to vote? I have my volume on, so you'll be here. Yes, okay, and yes, true, so we're passed to seven zero. Next up, we have visitor comments. If anybody's interested in speaking, we have no one here in the room with us. But if there's anyone online like to speak, please make yourself known. Seeing none, we'll move to to, uh, school committee announcements and recognitions. Members? Seeing none, I am, I don't.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Um, we just wanted to share our gratitude, uh, to you for serving on the school committee for the last three years. It's been a pleasure and the district is very lucky to, um, have had you in this spot and we really appreciate it. And would like to present you with this plaque, from everybody, from the M A S C, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, presented to Ryan Kelly, June eighteenth to June twenty twenty one, twenty eighteen, twenty twenty one, Long Meadows School Committee member. So, thank you to Ryan.
Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure. I appreciate it. Obviously, it's only as fun as the people you're working with, so I really appreciate it, especially the insanity that we have had over the past year. So, just say thank you to everybody. Any other, um, announcements or recognition? Seeing none, we can move on to, do we have guests for health and safety requirement? I know that's on there, but I'm not sure if we have those guests with us.
Uh, we do not have guests with us, uh, but there's certainly some health and safety topics that, um, we'd like to talk to you about. If you wanted to keep the agenda item where it is, I think we can, even though we don't have any of our normal guests with us tonight. Is that okay?
Please do, yes.
So, um, as has been the case for about fifteen or sixteen months, we're, we're sort of regularly tracking health and safety data and being attentive to the latest and greatest guidance that's coming from federal and state sources and our own local Board of Health. Uh, our Board of Health partners could not be with us tonight, but they did, uh, they have reported to us that uh, things continue to trend in the, in the right direction. In fact, uh, Andy Fraser used the phrase that he feels like we're, we're getting close to rock bottom, uh, in terms of the number of active cases. There's one, actually, two active cases in Long Meadow right now. Uh, the positivity rate in Long Meadow is at point one two percent, uh, which is exceedingly low and very encouraging. And I think it's a, a testament to the the commitment of this community to all the mitigation strategies and to, uh, to vaccination rates. Uh, in terms of the vaccination rates of our, of, of school-aged children, sixty-six percent of children ages twelve to fifteen in Long Meadow uh, have received a, uh, one dose and seventy-nine percent of, uh, people ages sixteen to nineteen have received a single, uh, single dose of the vaccination. So, so that's very encouraging. And, uh, you know, we're, we're, I'd say though Handen County has been sort of lagging behind the rest of the state of Long Meadow, uh, I think it's safe to say is, you know, kind of at the forefront in terms of the uh, number of residents that have, uh, vaccinated themselves and their children. So that's encouraging. It's a good sign for us going forward. Uh, along with that, we've, obviously, we've concluded the school year, but we have a, a very active summer program. And the Department of Education had come out with some guidance on May twenty seventh, which indicated that, um, uh, masking in particular was not, uh, required for summer programming. And so, spent a lot of time today and, uh, late last week, talking to some of our partners in the Board of Health about how to respond to this, um, this new guidance that doesn't require masks for, um, uh, those involved in the summer program. The, uh, our recommendation to you tonight is that we, um, discontinue requiring masks for students in the summer program. And, you know, with the, with the caveat and the understanding that, uh, as we always have done, we want to continue to track uh, health and safety data and that we would be prepared to, uh, shift gears and, and, and reinstate the requirement if necessary, if we're hearing that from, from, uh, federal, state, or local sources. Uh, also with the, with the caveat that whatever direction we take for summer school doesn't dictate or, um, direct us in any way for the fall. And, you know, I think that the, the wise advice right along with this pandemic has been to take it sort of, you know, quarter by quarter, you know, um, a, a a batch of weeks at a time and not try to, uh, plan out or lock yourself into some mitigation strategy because we, we still want to continue to monitor the direction that this pandemic takes. But, uh, tonight, I think we can safely recommend that we discontinue, uh, masks for, uh, students in the, in the summer programs. Uh, along with that, we would want our approach for adults to mirror the approach that is currently being taken by the town. What the town requires is that if individuals, if employees produce, um, a record of their vaccination and if they've been cleared by H R, then they would be, um, not required to wear a mask even indoors. And so, we'd like to mirror that, uh, with our employees, those who are instructing in the summer program and those that work in our offices and schools year round. And so, uh, you know, that's, that's the direction that, um, makes sense to us. And having talked to Jennifer Siegel at the Board of Health and Andy Fraser today, uh, having talked to some of my colleagues, uh, in the area, some superintendent colleagues, and having heard a, uh, Commissioner's statewide call last week, uh, we think that makes sense. Again, understanding that we can always review and move in another direction if necessary, but right now, given the positivity rates that we're seeing, the vaccination rates we're seeing, we think it's safe to, to move in that direction. If the, if the committee, uh, the reason that it needs to come to the committee is that you currently, as you know, have a, a mask policy in place. And to suspend that max mask policy, you would need to access, uh, policy B G F, uh, which allows the committee to suspend its own policies by two-thirds vote of the committee members that are present at any regular meeting with the, uh, understanding that, that suspended policy would also have to be on your next agenda for sort of secondary review. Diane has some more experience than I do with this in terms of the suspension of policies and how that works from a Robert's Rules of Order, uh, standpoint. So Diane, if I, uh, explain that incorrectly, let me know. But if the committee was comfortable with the guidance that we're getting from the Department of Education and what we've heard from the Board of Health, then, uh, we would ask you tonight to consider uh, suspending your mask policy. Again, just can't emphasize it enough that we would likely continue to regularly review this and revisit it as necessary. We don't know what the fall will bring yet in terms of masks. I can say that the Department of Education has said that they, they've essentially lifted all the statewide, uh, health and safety mitigation strategies. That doesn't mean there won't be local options and that there wouldn't be local requirements, but as far as the state requirements, guidance mandates, regulations, those have been lifted for the fall. But the state wisely has also said that, you know, they'll need to continue to monitor this as well. So tonight really is, you know, mostly we're focused just on the masks and, and, uh, uh, request for you to consider your face mask policy and whether or not you'd like to see that remain in place. Happy to answer any questions as best I can on that.
Thanks, Superintendent. I just wanna, um, just be clear on what, what my understanding is. So, this would be participant, youth, the student participants of summer school would not have to wear masks during summer school. And what about the staff?
Staff, we would want to take the same approach that the town is currently taking with its employees, and that is that, uh, their employees uh, are not required to wear a mask in town buildings during, while they're working if they can produce evidence of vaccination and if they've been cleared by H R. So I talked to our H R director, Erica Jolinas, and, and she, uh, advised that they would be prepared to sort of keep that database for us and keep us apprised of who has, um, provided the evidence of vaccination and who has not. Uh, I also had talked to our attorney just to sort of make sure that that was a, a, a legally sustainable defense thing, and it, and it is that, that we're able to ask employees for evidence of, uh, vaccination. But again, if they, if they either chose to continue, anyone, student, staff, adult, children, if anyone chose to continue wearing a mask, uh, that, that obviously remains an option. But if, and if any vaccinated individual wanted to continue wearing a mask, they could, but if you were unvaccinated, hadn't produced proof, then you would need to be required to wear a mask.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Uh, so one question I would have, we're, if we do a motion right now, it would be termed summer program. Um, not summer school because summer school would indicate like credit recovery or something like that. We're talking about all summer programs?
All, all summer school, all summer programming, uh, anything that we sponsor.
And would we have to add the line about, and our adults will follow the town guidance or something like that? Trying to help Suzie out over there.
I, as far as I see it, and Diane, please, you know, lay in if you, if you feel, uh, missing something here. As far as I see it, you would simply need to uh, suspend your face mask policy, uh, which I don't have the reference to right off the top of my head, but you would suspend that policy. And then that, that would, uh, allow us administratively to, to simply put out the announcement about how this is going to roll out for students and for adults.
I would recommend that we do what Ryan said and add in that for adults, we follow the town, um, procedure. And the face mask policy is E B C F A.
Yeah, that would we want to pay that level of clarity to it just to, then, that would no doubt help. And we don't have a, um, there's, there's not a sort of recommended, uh, motion in your annotated agenda. A, a lot of this was evolving over the weekend. In fact, there was an email that came from the Commissioner on Saturday night because the, the governor and some, uh, in a press conference or in some comments had created some confusion about the requirements at the end of the school year. So the Commissioner had to provide that additional clarification over the weekend. So as has been the case, it's been sort of a, bit of a, a moving target for us, but we think it kind of makes sense for us at this point, given the, the rates that we're seeing.
Sure, that makes sense. Anybody interested in a motion?
Donna, you'll let me know if this is sufficient. Or Diane. Donna. Sorry, I used to have a assistant named Donna. That was weird. Anyway, um, I move that the school committee suspend policy E B C F A for the duration of the two thousand and twenty one summer school program for both students and adults as implemented by the Town of Long Meadow and authorize the superintendent to address any operational implementation related to the suspension of the policy. Is that sufficient, Diane?
Diane, did that sound good before I ask for a second?
It sounded great, but I didn't get it all. So I hope Suzie, you can give me that written.
I will.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Gianna?
Thanks for doing that, Suzie. Um, my question is about using the terms for the duration. Just in case, as Superintendent said, if we did see some crazy uptick in cases.
Yeah, and, um, to respond to that, I would argue that to address any operational implementation related to suspension of the policy would, would capture any shifting he might have to do given the circumstances. So in other words, the operational implementation is up to him. If he sees an uptick in cases, he will, he will come back to us and say, we need to actually reinstate the policy for summer.
Okay, so that, that piece takes over the other piece. All right, thanks, Suzie.
Cool.
I'm wondering if we need to change the phrasing to say temporarily suspend because policy B G F states that we are only temporarily suspending it today until our next scheduled meeting.
Diane, is that the, typically the half that, that you would take?
This does need to come back next. Yeah, we, we probably should add that word and then, um, take it up again at the next meeting.
So will we need a motion to amend?
I move that the school committee accept the amended motion for the temporary suspension of policy E B C F A.
Is there a second to the amendment?
Second.
Any discussion on the amendment? Voting to add the word temporarily to what Suzie had read earlier. Bronwyn?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Kevin? Sorry, it's captured.
Yes.
And Jamie? Yes. And yes for me? So now we're back to the motion itself. Any discussion, any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Bronwyn?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes for me. The mask policy is suspended temporarily. Marty, is there more for health and safety?
That's it. Thank you.
Next up, the superintendent report?
Couple of quick items. Uh, we are in the process of, um, screening and interviewing candidates for the assistant principal positions that the committee was kind enough to support, uh, beginning next year at the elementary level. So, we had, uh, pleased that we had a really strong applicant pool. Um, candidly, a bit worried about it going in, but, uh, because I'm not sure how many people are making those big career transitions at this point, but we had a great applicant pool and we helped to identify, uh, three strong candidates, um, and maybe take an opportunity to bring them forward to, uh, one of your meetings at some point before the beginning of the school year. Uh, the, uh, as the committee knows, um, our, uh, town, his town elections are scheduled tomorrow and, uh, it will likely require us to reconstitute and reorganize the school committee. Uh, at this point, uh, there's not another, we don't have a, a summer meeting schedule. Typically, reorganization meetings are built into your school year meeting schedule with the elections being as late as they are. We need to set up a, a meeting that kind of extends after, um, after the school year. So, the, as Diane and I talked this through, we thought it might make sense if it fits everybody's schedules to have a brief reorganization meeting, uh, next Tuesday night. That would be the twenty ninth middle of and it would be an opportunity to elect a new chair, reestablish, uh, the subcommittees that need to be up and running uh, over the summer, and then also to develop a, a summer meeting schedule. As Diane and I see it right now, there, there's no, uh, pressing summer concerns, but things have a way of popping up. And I suspect in August, we'll need to come back to the committee with some, uh, plans for, say, reopening, uh, in the fall. But minimally, I think if we could get, uh, a meeting together sooner rather than later to reorganize the committee, just to make sure that we have a chair in place, I'd hate to go weeks into the summer, uh, without, uh, a school committee chair. So that's a, a proposal for you to think about and, and if we could pin it down, whoever is, whoever is elected following the election tomorrow, we would just notify those individuals of the meeting date.
Thoughts by the group? Without me?
Fine with that.
I'll be away, but I can join remotely.
It looks like you have a meeting there, Diane. Twenty ninth.
And then, uh, uh, we'll, we'll also, prior to that meeting, we'll also do some homework on the extension of the provision that will allow for continued remote access and whether or not committee staff to sort of elect to make that happen. But the, uh, the legislation that went in place last week allows for that to continue through April of two thousand and twenty-two. So we'll bring back some information and a report to you on, on, on what, if any decisions you might need to make to continue that. And then finally, uh, to take an opportunity with my report to thank, uh, Chairman Kelly for his amazing leadership over the last few years. Uh, he, he steered the ship through some choppy waters and, uh, it's been a, it's been a really challenging year. And I think everybody, we all appreciated the, the steady hand and the the calm leadership and the great sense of humor that he brought to this job. And, uh, he made it, he made it a, a pleasure to work through some really challenging times. So on behalf of the entire administrative team, we, we thank you as well for, for your great service over the last few years.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Uh, so for my report would just be a thank you to everybody that I got to work with over the past three years. It's it's fun being in education as a principal and formerly as a teacher to come and learn about different things and see it from a different perspective. So learned a lot from the admin team here. We had a finance meeting earlier and I had the pleasure of being on that subcommittee where I learned a lot from Mr. Mazza about how the budget works and all the committee members that I've worked with over the past couple of years. The teachers' union, we've had, we had a clause to discuss things over the past three years a few times, and I appreciate the information and the straightforwardness and, uh, camaraderie. I think it was just, it was a great experience and I just want to thank everybody I worked with. Appreciate it. The townspeople. Also, a lot of townspeople share their opinion and thank you for that. It's always great to hear from everybody. Next item is our new student rep. I'd like to introduce everybody to Dagan Connelly, a tenth grade student at L H S. Dagan, do you have a, say a few words for us here?
Sure. Uh, hello. Thank you for having me. I am, I, as Mr. Kelly said, I am a tenth grader. I'm a rising junior. I'm going to have, I'm willing to work with you guys. I hope you guys are willing to say, to work with me. I can't wait to have a banger of a, of a coming year and hopefully if I get reelected next year as well. Um, just a couple of things. Obviously, we are moving into the summer. School has been dismissed for the next coming months, but moving on for to somewhat of a report, uh, the class of two thousand and twenty-two that are going to be our senior class coming in, um, held a night of nights. That was an event where they, uh, it was really just a movie night on the field. They seemed to have lots of positive feedback and a great time there. And then, and Long Meadow, in true Long Meadow fashion, winning and being the best that we are. And then, and Long Meadow, in true Long Meadow fashion, winning and being the best that we are. We are moving into postseason sports. Specifically, myself, I mean, boys and girls track team are moving in from um, western, central to league to league and states. So other than that, nothing to further report. I can't wait to work with you guys and have an awesome coming year.
Thank you, Dagan. What's your event in track?
I throw the shot, disc and jab, and I run the four by four.
So did you saw that shot put this week? Do you have any chance of going after that guy who just set another world record?
I don't know about that one. He's pretty good, but you know, uh, not anything can be done with hard work and determination.
There you go. He's a little older than you. You just kind of catch up. Thank you. Welcome to the committee. I'm sure everyone looks forward to it. We've had great students working with us and we appreciate you. Do we have any other reports? LPVC?
Uh, yes. I just wanted to report, um, we had a meeting last week in which um, our chair, Bill Fonseca, presented the evaluation of the executive director, Roland Joyle. Um, so we got, he had input from all seven member districts, representatives, and um, Roland ended up with a proficient on his evaluation. It was his first year. Crazy time to have a first year, but uh, he did really well, and that was his final rating. And we have another meeting scheduled for August. Thank you.
Open space. Air, energy and sustainability. No report. Uh, finance sub?
Good evening. Um, finance sub met earlier this evening. Uh, and we reviewed a FY twenty-one year-to-date budget report. Uh, we'll be monitoring that closely as the final ones and Arolls are processed over the next couple of weeks, and we proceed with the closing of the fiscal year twenty-one books. And there are also a number of items that are on the agenda later that um, I can speak to that finance sub also address.
Thank you. Policy sub report?
Happy to take it, uh, Gianna. Thanks. So you have had a couple of policies that were uh, posted to the district website to solicit public comment. We did not receive uh, any public comment on those two policies. One is on school admissions, a- and we simply, through the policy sub, recommended the inclusion of some language around the enrollment of foster children, military children and homeless children. The recommendation for that came from a essentially an audit that we participated in through the through the Department of Education. And then secondly, there was uh, some policy language that we needed to clean up regarding uh, background checks that we do on employees uh, to make sure that we're notifying employees that uh, when they come to Long Meadow, we do not take suitability determinations from other districts. It's something that uh, they need to renew upon uh, hiring here in Long Meadow. So those two policies are, uh, have been submitted, have been up for public comment for the required amount of time, and there's a a motion if you'd like to consider it.
Anyone want to take that?
I move on the recommendation of the policy subcommittee that the school committee approve the amended school committee policies, JF, school admissions and ADDA background checks as presented.
So your second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, call for a vote. Brownman?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yeah.
Nicole?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes for me. The motion passes seven zero. Curriculum sub?
Yes, we met um, on June tenth, and um, we got an update from uh, Susan Bertrand regarding the um, end-of-year experience that uh, some students had at at the middle schools um, for after-school um, extra, extra help, and that seemed to go really well. They had a lot of students take advantage of it, so um, kudos to them for pulling that off and getting some much-needed support to our middle school students. Um, we also were updated on the many summer school experiences that are being offered uh, this summer. Um, the enrichment programs, um, everybody should have received, um, and the town should have received information about all of the different enrichment programs that are being offered, which is great. Um, there's also some summer academy experiences for students who might need, you know, some targeted support in in standards and and things of that nature. And um, I think the only challenge that uh, they're facing is just at this point staffing everything, um, because uh, it's it, again, it's been a year like no other. Um, and so people may um, be struggling to add something else into their schedules, but um, I know that they're looking beyond um, just Long Meadow and trying to find uh, the best people to to staff that program. And then uh, we did receive an update on curriculum writing, um, projects that are going on over the summer. There's quite a few um, sort of individual projects, but there's a a big, like, district push for uh, curriculum to be written at the um, middle level for English Language Arts, and that's uh, going to commence soon with uh, work starting over the summer and then continuing over the course of the year. I think that's uh, what we talked about. If uh, Gianna or Nicole have any, any additions. I know Suzie couldn't be with us tonight, so.
Thank you. Uh, eval sub? Brownman?
Thank you. Uh, the eval subcommittee met on Tuesday, June fifteenth. Um, the eval subcommittee is comprised of Ryan, Suzie and I, and we appreciate everyone, A, spending so much time on their evaluations of Dr. O'Shea, and also we appreciate you getting to the, getting this to us in a timely manner. So when we met, um, we were able to review um, everyone's evaluation, and Ryan will explain how that process went.
Okay, mute yourself, please. So basically, we, we took everybody's reports and we tabulated it on a point score of uh, one, two, three, four, based on how you uh, ranked uh, zero, one, two, three, four on the goals, but one, two, three, four, and we came up with a score. We did an average, and that's how the ratings were compiled. And the comments section and the overall commendations and the recommendations for continued growth came directly from uh, people's suggestions. Suzie did, basically did a copy and paste um, off of the suggestions from various members. And it was um, it was a case of that representing the majority of the people's feelings on the particular topics. So I think for Brownman, you're going to read the goals and the standards, and then Suzie and I are going to read the recommenda-, are you doing commendations too, or is Brownman doing that as well? Brown, so on the beginning and then we'll do the app.
Okay. Uh, thank you. So this is um, Dr. O'Shea's evaluation report from the school committee this year for the professional practice goal that was met, the student learning goals was met, the district improvement goals met. Standard one, instructional leadership. Dr. O'Shea was rated as proficient. Standard two, management and operations. Dr. O'Shea was rated as exemplary. Standard three, family and community engagement uh, was proficient. And standard four, excuse me, family and community engagement was exemplary, and standard four, professional culture was proficient. As a result, his overall rating was proficient. And um, I will read what the evaluation committee put together based on, uh, hopefully everyone's comments are um, seen in here somewhere. So the overall commendations, after the most challenging school year in our lifetime, Dr. O'Shea not only met his professional practice, student learning and district improvement goals, he also navigated the challenging and ever-changing COVID landscape. Further, equity and anti-racism have been key focus points for professional development, curriculum analysis and review, and community conversations this year. Dr. O'Shea's work towards the completion of the equity audit with the Center for Leadership and Educational Equity is laudable and moves forward the work towards equity in our school district. Finally, ending near with one hundred percent of the students in school who chose to be and continually responding to calls for returning more students to school over the course of the year helped the students, families and the entire community put some of the darkest days of the pandemic's effects behind us. Dr. O'Shea's commitment to the students, families and staff in the Long Meadow Public School District is admirable, and we are grateful for his time, tireless energy and adept leadership throughout this uniquely challenging year.
Thank you. And the uh, thanks, Brownman. I'm doing one and three, and you're doing two and four.
Sounds good.
Recommendations for continued growth on the topic of anti-racist district and schools. Dr. O'Shea should create an opportunity for the equity audit committee, as well as other collaborative community groups, to come together in order to review the information in the final report and create smart goals and actionable steps moving forward. These goals and steps should be used as the foundation for future PD training, curriculum audits and department-based and school-wide data analysis.
In student-centered learning? Oh, I thought I just unmuted my phone. Sorry. I'm, I'm not muted now. Okay. And from, uh, in student-centered learning, moving forward, Dr. O'Shea should focus on providing professional development that addresses anti-racism and student-centered learning in ways that connect to our vision of the graduate and district goals. The committee encourages Dr. O'Shea to develop community groups that allow him to work alongside educators, students and families to create collaborative approaches to closing equity gaps, increasing student-centered learning opportunities and finding new ways of defining student success and assessing student.
Waiting for you to mute. Am I frozen? I think I'm frozen. All right, am I good? You guys hear me? Yes? All right, thank you. And instructional leadership. As noted in his reflection, Dr. O'Shea over knew his commitment to providing instructional leadership by conducting classroom visits with his leadership team and continue to calibrate the evaluation of teachers by the administration team and in-depth and actionable evaluations of the administrative team itself.
Vision of the graduate slash vision of success in his promotion of the Challenge Success Survey of Student Experiences to be administered during the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year, Dr. O'Shea should use the resulting data analysis to work with school leaders to examine secondary school structures, systems and educational offerings with an eye towards redesigning curriculum, instruction, assessment and reporting systems to meet the needs of twenty-first century learners and fulfill the LPS vision of the graduate.
Thank you. Brownman, if you'll allow me just to wrap up, I just want to re- repeat the first line from our commendations, because I think it's really important to drive that part home. It's already been said, but after the most challenging school year in our lifetime, Dr. O'Shea not only met his professional practice, student learning and district improvement goals, he also navigated the challenging and ever-changing COVID landscape. This has been a school year like no other, and we appreciate very much the leadership of Dr. O'Shea and his team working for him. Marty, you have it?
Uh, so I, I appreciate um, the the feedback and the rich process and and everyone's, you know, sort of very fair, uh, very candid evaluation and the the committee really adhered to the model that really makes the evaluation tool worthwhile, which is starts with goal setting at the beginning of the year, mid-cycle check-in, which we had a couple of opportunities for, and then also the the end-of-year uh, session. And um, the committee had asked me to write a reflection, uh, which I did, and I was a, I found it to be almost a cathartic experience, uh, just to sit back and take stock of what we accomplished. And I think, you know, obviously the overarching goal was to get through this school year safely and um, and but also, I thought, you know, what I heard from this committee is ensuring that we um, maintain really respectful, productive relationships with all stakeholders. And we worked through um, a lot of, you know, with all stakeholders, we we worked through challenges and reached some really strong agreements about what made sense for us. And uh, I always appreciated the the candid direction that the committee provided throughout the course of the year. And I like the way that you said, you know, that we we responded to the call for uh, additional safe in-person learning. And that was the, that was the challenge that the committee had uh, asked of me going back to this summer of twenty twenty, and uh, that's the challenge that was at the front of our work. So um, thanks for a great process. I appreciate the the support, the partnership of this committee and and I appreciate you picking up the phone so many times over the course of a of a long and busy year and and providing me with your thoughts and direction and feedback. So thanks so much to everybody.
Brownman and Gianna?
I just wanted to add one quick thing. Um, I just wanted to encourage the community members to read Dr. O'Shea's self-reflection. It really was superb. Uh, it was very enjoyable to read, and it was definitely his best one since I've been on the committee. And I I just really enjoy reading, and I think uh, the community members would enjoy reading it as well. Thanks.
Agreed. It was a great process. Gianna?
Yeah, I just want to thank you, Superintendent. Um, also thank the evaluation subcommittee. Um, but Ryan, I have a, I have a question for step one. I thought it was met exceeded met.
Okay. It's a, yeah.
I don't have it in front of me, so maybe if you check on that, please?
On the official one in the drive, um, it is, I'm, I'm not muted. Um, on the official one in the drive, it it does say met exceeded met for goals one, two and three. So we just need to, yeah, reflect that.
Okay, sorry about that. Um, so this I'm unmuted. I apologize for that. So for the student learning goal, uh, Dr. O'Shea was rated exceeded in that area. Thanks. Thank you, Gianna.
Thank you. And and I agree with um, the sentiment that about the self-reflection. I think um, you know, knowing the business that that I've been in and 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 Marty's been in for a long time, um, it's, it's really so critical that the learning leader of the district, you know, really uh, authentically reflects and takes stock. And I think that um, that is such a model for everyone else in the district to take um, a look at and really understand that there's there's, you know, especially the year like no other that we've had, looking through how how we, how we managed and how we got through it, but then also, you know, reflecting back and say, okay, what's my next step? Where am I gonna, you know, how am I gonna grow forward now? And so, and that's our job is to help you with that. Um, just like it's your job to help your administrators and their job to help with the, with, help teachers with that. So um, I thank you for setting that example for the rest of the district, for sure.
Thank you.
I'm having computer problems, just to let everybody know, and you're still talking in my ear at the moment. So sorry, I might, I can tell it's unstable because you all keep freezing. Um, so if I'm pausing, it's because I'm waiting for the sound in my ear to stop. Are there any other comments, or can we move to a recommended motion? To the recommended motion?
I can take that. Um, I move on the recommendation of the evaluation subcommittee that the school committee approved the summative unified evaluation of the superintendent for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one as presented and authorize the chair to sign.
Second. And I'll try to be loud. I vote for your own. I'm coming back.
Are you with us?
Sorry, I have a computer problems, folks. Can everybody hear me? Didn't see me again. Okay, so we are now going to vote on the motion unless there is further discussion. Seeing none, I will call for a vote. Brian?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes for me, the motion passes seven zero. Honestly, I'm still hearing votes in my ears. So sorry. Here's Jamie. Um, I'm going business. Food service contract, Tom, we're back up to some finance stuff.
Thank you. So there are a couple of items that Finance Subcommittee reviewed earlier. The first is a renewal for the food service contract provider. As it's kind of been mentioned tonight, it's been a tough year. Participation was below what we normally would expect. We served approximately 116,000 lunches throughout the year. A good portion, about 40,000 of those, were through the Grab and Go program that dropped at the front of the high school, which ended earlier this month. And financially, the program is projected to lose approximately 70,000, which actually was better than what we anticipated at the beginning of the school year and as the fall proceeded with the pandemic and participation and the reduced number of students participating in the program and in school and the reduced week. So overall, considering the way the year went, we probably finished better than what I anticipated. So what you have for consideration tonight would be a one-year renewal for the Contract for Fresh Picks to operate the food service program for the 21-22 school year, which the Finance Subcommittee did endorse approval for, for next year. And just so everybody understands, when a vendor is selected, you're allowed to continue working with them up to five years, but each year you have to do a renewal of the contract. So we will be entering, if the contract amendment is approved tonight, this will be year four of that five-year cycle. Just so you have an idea of where we stand in the process.
Tom, is there, from your perspective, is there any reason to not?
None that I can speak to. I think they've done a, they've done a good job responding to the needs of the district this year, expanding the service times for the elementary schools with one lunch service per grade, trying to manage staffing during this, this period also. So, I mean, I think they've done as the best they could. They did as much as we asked. They responded and opened up the Grab and Go site, like I said, which really helped the financial situation. So I was pleased with the work they did this year in terms of trying to manage and keep costs down as best they possibly could.
Continue on with Fresh Picks. Thank you. Anyone else with a question?
I move that the School Committee renew the contract with Fresh Picks Cafe, a division of Cafe Services for the 2021-2022 school year as presented, and authorize the chair to sign the contract. Amendment number four on behalf of the School Committee.
That is a possible motion? Or second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry. I had some.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Now, knowing that we were in a situation this year where all of the meals that we served were, were fully reimbursable, correct? So in other words, if we had had a certain level of participation, they would have at least broken even, correct? Is that, I'm just, I just wanted to understand a little bit more about the financial implications.
Yes, I would say, I mean, obviously, participation drives how you do financially on top of keeping your costs at a manageable level. But this year, I think, participation leveled because of the hybrid model, the four days a week. And then as we progressed, we'd bring in more students back. We saw an increase in the participation. But we were still incurring the costs specifically around the labor because we still needed to bring in the full complement, especially at the middle and elementary schools, to serve the students. And we extended the length of serving time, which added to the amount of time their staff needed to be on-site. So definitely, participation, an increase in participation would have helped offset the deficit we saw this year. This is not a normal operation for us in terms of this program. It's usually, it's been around $10,000 to $20,000 a year.
And then I just have a follow-up to that. So is there anything in this contract that, in this new amendment that adjusts for any of the experiences we had this year? In particular, I'm just thinking, you know, a lot of, a lot of places have been looking at their, you know, contracts now and adding that force majeure clause of, you know, anything that happens, there's, you know, some sort of out or some sort of, you know, adjustment thing can be made. I don't know if that's anything that, and it might not even be that. I'm just suggesting, like, is there anything we could do with this amendment to kind of offset what we, not offset, but think ahead about what we might be dealing with for next year too?
There is some force majeure language in the original contract that obviously would have given us that opportunity to get out of if we felt we needed to. Knowing we would still need a program, the hope is that with the extension of the Seamless Summer Program into next school year, and we'll be able to offer, again, free lunches for the, for all of next school year again, we'll see a rebound in participation. Again, it's hard to know for sure what'll happen. Who knows what next year will bring? We hope that it's a normal year as possible. And we see everything back to pre-COVID days. But hopefully, with that, that program and the free offering to all students, we'll continue to see higher levels of participation as we did at the end of this school year.
Thank you, Tom.
Thanks for all this, Tom. I, um, Suzie asked her a question, then I thought of something. Like in my district and my school, it was all cold lunch options. Did we have anything limited and are we going to return to anything extra? Does this have anything to do with that?
The district would have authority over the menus that students are offered for the lunches. We did not offer just a cold menu. I would say when the Grab and Go program kind of initiated, we started with cold offerings, but they transitioned quickly to send home frozen for, with instructions on how to heat those up. Again, I mean, participation drives how healthy a program does. And offering students one option is not going to bring in customers. They want options. And so I would say that is probably one of the things I appreciated the most, was their willingness to try to be creative with the loss of à la carte sales, was to try to capture students through the traditional lunch program by keeping the menu, changing it up, and offering different options for students, both hot and cold. Because not everybody likes a hot lunch. Sometimes students like a sandwich. But I think there were choices enough to keep kids interested in coming.
Thank you, Tom.
We are in discussion. The motion is ready.
Is there any other questions? Or comments? Okay, if not, we will vote. Gianna?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Okay, seven zero. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is a request for the School Committee to authorize the Superintendent to approve the end-of-fiscal year transfers. See, this is a practice we do at the end of every year is to authorize the Superintendent to approve transfers that would be necessary to close out FY21. It would be done in accordance with School Committee Policy DBJA, which outlines the criteria in which those transfers would fall under. Historically, we've been, we've used a more stringent rule in terms of doing transfers. We tried to address any line that actually had a negative balance before we closed the books out. So, but the policy actually gives some latitude in terms of when it is actually required. But so that's, again, here for your consideration tonight's Finance Sub did discuss this also and support approval of the authorization for FY21.
Are there any questions for Tom? If not, we could do the motion and then see if there are questions.
I move, as specified in the School Committee Policy DBJA, that the School Committee grant authority to the Superintendent to approve the necessary budget transfers between munis budgetary lines in order to close the FY2021 accounts.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Brian?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes for me. The motion passes seven zero.
Uh, thank you. The Finance Sub did review some building use requests, and we are going to ask that these items be tabled tonight. There were some questions, and they would like some additional information for them to review before bringing it forward for full consideration to the School Committee. And then the, the next item, the FY21 Budget Revision, there is a request to revise the budget for two grants. The first is the Medco Grant. There is three lines to move some existing funds around. So we are not changing the award of the grant, so it will remain at 241,000. But it's adjusting the distribution to reflect where the funds were actually spent in FY21. And the second transfer or revision is to actually recognize a state grant. So the state gave us a COVID prevention grant for FY21 in the amount of $88,750. This would allow an appropriation of $76,000 for furniture and equipment and $12,500 and change for safety supplies. The money was primarily to use to buy additional furniture, desks and chairs for the middle and high schools, specifically as we are bringing more students back, needing more capacity in the classroom. We didn't have enough desks as we pulled them out earlier in the year to put them in the cafeteria. So we needed to buy some additional desks and chairs to replace the ones that were being used in the caf. And then we also had to buy some additional Plexiglas and storage containers. So we used the funds to help offset those costs. And that again is $88,750 that would be added to the FY21 budget.
Any questions? Now we can hear the motion.
I move that the School Committee approve the FY21 Grants and Special Revenue Revisions as indicated in the document titled FY21 Grants and Special Revenues Revision Number Four dated June 16, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any, any further discussion? I will call for a vote. Brian?
Yes.
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yeah.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes for me. The motion passes seven zero. And we are up to a motion on executive session. Someone else to take that one?
I move that this, yeah, what's the tuition? There's a, there's tuition student requests?
I don't know, Marty, if you want to talk about that, it hasn't, it isn't to the point of us being able to run it. Marty, you want to give it?
We, we had an inquiry from another out-of-state resident about a potential tuition arrangement. And the, the family hasn't really gone through all the proper channels with us administratively. We had it as a placeholder on the agenda, but it's not ready for your consideration just yet. I suspect it will be at your next meeting.
Anyone want to take the motion?
I move that the School Committee meet an executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Purpose Two, to conduct a strategy session in preparation with collective bargaining with units B, C, D, E, F, H, and non-bargaining personnel. And Purpose Seven, consideration of release of executive session minutes of previous meetings to reconvene into open session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, to read this again, the School Committee will meet in executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Purpose Two, to conduct a strategy session in preparation with collective bargaining with units B, C, D, E, F, H, and non-bargaining personnel. And Purpose Seven, consideration of release of executive session minutes of previous meetings to reconvene into open session. Any discussion? I'll call a vote. Brian?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Uh, Suzie?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes for me. So we are in, we are going to executive session, and we will reconvene. Thank you.
Good evening, I'd like to call our open session back to order. Susie, be of possible motion.
I move that the school committee approve the memorandums of agreement with the Longmeadow Education Association, Units B, D, E, F, and H as presented.
Sister second.
Second.
Uh, any discussion?
Thank you. Uh, I so appreciate the committee's work on this and it's a, it's a, uh, certainly an achievement to bring these, uh, these agreements to a settlement in a way that, uh, was, was collaborative and yet spirited, uh, with the LEA. And the agreements covering, uh, units B, D, E, F, and H, uh, mirror the agreement that was previously approved for unit A. And just for the public at home, unit B covers our assistant principals, unit D covers, uh, clerical staff. Unit E, uh, covers a variety of professional support positions. Unit F covers our, uh, para educators and unit H, uh, is, covers our, uh, custodians. And so with each agreement, there was a, uh, 1.5% was applied to all steps and lanes in the contracts. Uh, that with, uh, again mirrors the agreement that we reached with unit A. Additionally, uh, with each unit, there was a, uh, one-time payment, uh, that would be, that would be made to members of each bargaining unit. And that payment is coming from the current school year budget. Uh, and then additionally, uh, the, in each, for each unit, the work year would be modified, would be reduced by one, uh, working day per, throughout the one year that the, that this agreement is in place for. So this is a one-year successor agreement for each of the units that were listed in the motion. So again, thanks to the committee for, uh, working productively with the LEA. Susie Bell is our, uh, as our, um, negotiations chair, uh, and Ryan and Nicole highly involved in that process as well. And so we're, we're pleased that we were able to bring these to conclusion before the end of this fiscal year. So thank you to everybody.
Thank you. And as we said when we talked about you today, we want to thank all the units. This was a very hard year and we appreciate the efforts and, uh, we're glad we were able to get this agreement. Are there any other comments? Not, we can do a vote.
Yeah.
Tiana?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Susie?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes from me, the motion passes seven zero. Another motion, Susan?
I move that the school committee approve the contract amendments for the superintendent, assistant superintendent for learning, assistant superintendent for finance operations, director of pupil services, and director of pupil services as presented for FY 2021 dated July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021. And for FY 2022 dated July 2021, July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022. And authorize the chair to sign the amendments on behalf of the committee.
Sister second.
Second.
Is there any discussion? So now we'll call for a vote. Brown?
Yes.
Tiana?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Susie?
Yes.
Yes.
Jamie? Uh, it's a yes from Jamie, uh, a yes from me. Thank you. Passes seven zero. Another motion?
I move that the school committee authorize an allocation of a total of $7,000 out of the fiscal year 21 budget to use for contractual one-time payments to Longmeadow Public Schools administrative staff.
Sister second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Call for a vote.
Yes.
Tiana?
Yes, yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Susie?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes for me. Motion passes seven zero. One more.
I move that the school committee on the recommendation of the superintendent approve an FY 21 one-time payment of $400 and authorize one additional vacation day to be utilized in FY 22 year, school year for non-collective bargaining support staff.
Sister second.
Second.
And discussion. Seeing none, call for a vote. Brown?
Yes.
Tiana?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Susie?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes for me. Motion passes seven zero.
I move that the school committee adjourn the 20, June 21st, 2021 school committee meeting.
Sister second.
Second.
Call for a vote. Brown?
Yeah.
Tiana?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Susie? Jamie?
Yes.
Yes for me. The motion passed at seven zero. Thank you very much. See you next school year.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks. Thanks, Ryan.